The Buckingham Plant and Commission Meeting for February 27th. Please stand as Commissioner Dory will lead us on our invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance by Pete Kapaniski.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we praise you, Lord. We just thank you for all the blessings you bestowed on us, Lord. We thank you for letting us come together and have this meeting tonight. Please be with us, guys, direct us, and be here and help us in all the ways that you would. We ask in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Commissioners. That brings us to Sky with a thread of quorum. We have a full slate, eight of eight, so that's, we do have a quorum. Nikki, is there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Have a motion and second to approve and a discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, that passes. We have minutes from January 23rd of regular meeting. Do I have a motion of peruse?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion and second to approve, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, that moves through. Nikki, that brings us to our general comment period, public comment period. Do we have any people signed up?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have five signed up to speak. The first will be Guy Dixon, followed by Mindy Zlatnik.
Okay. Mr. Dixon, if you come on up front, you have three minutes. You're speaking on anything in the county other than the three public hearings that we have tonight.
So it's lately come to my attention, gosh, I can't see anything.
Could you give your full name and address, sir?
My name's Guy Bishop Dixon, 228 Rosney Farm Lane, Dillon, Virginia. It has lately come to my attention that the county is poised to consider a set of significant changes in the zoning rules that would, if adopted, place serious new restrictions, if not outright bans, on various types of mining on the vast majority of privately held land in Buckingham. My company, as many of you know, has been based and has had 100% of its operations and employees in Buckingham for the better part of the last century. And given that KMC, I think, has played a somewhat significant and positive role in the economic development of our little corner of the world over the course of those many decades, and that we have been a reasonable corporate citizen over that vast time span, I feel that it would not only be sensible but prudent for the people considering these changes to study the issue with the diligence and care that such a significant shift in policy deserves. And it's hard for a reasonable person to imagine that such diligence would not at least include a careful consideration of the long-term effects that such a policy shift would have on the economic development and employment situation of the county in the decades to come. And Kyanite Mining would gladly participate in that discussion in any way that the county thought appropriate.
Okay, thank you, sir.
My name is Mindy Zlatnik, I live in District Five. The amendment to the zoning ordinance that the supervisors have decided to move ahead with is not without risk. Even though the Virginia Code gives municipalities permission to regulate mining through zoning, history shows that corporations often use the takings clause, based on the Fifth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, to sue or threaten to sue local governments to change their minds. Brian Colton's excellent editorial in the Farmville Herald last week quotes Astons Bay CEO Thomas Ehrlich, saying that his company plans to continue working with local landowners no matter what local officials do. Moreover, Ehrlich continues, quote, "If the county decides to remove that right to mine, then it's a takings issue for landowners to pursue." And read landowner as wirehouseer. What is a takings issue? The Supreme Court established a regulatory takings issue in 1922 case of Pennsylvania Coal Company versus Mahone. This case is often cited by the legal community for the proposition that if environmental regulations take property under the Fifth Amendment, it results in the necessary compensation for the property owner as an eminent domain. Mahone, however, is the first case in which the court declared that the Fifth Amendment mandated that corporations be compensated for the diminishment of property value resulting from the application of regulations seeking to protect the health, safety, and welfare of people and the natural environment. In other words, if Buckingham County has a zoning ordinance that results in limiting of future profits of a company, or the diminishment of property value, the county can be sued. It's not an automatic win for the corporations. The courts would have to weigh in, but the above Ehrlich quote sounds like a warning or saber rattling to me. I suggest you ask the county attorney about takings issue and see what he says. He has stated his concerns about the vulnerability of the rights-based ordinance in terms of the county being sued, but what does he think about counties getting sued or threatened under the takings doctrine, which has a long history of lawsuits against local municipalities in just your position? The rights-based ordinance is not within your purview as it is not a zoning or land-use law. We feel that both ordinance would be stronger together, and thus we ask your support to recommend both to the supervisors. While you're working on the zoning amendments, please ask the supervisors to send the toxic trespass ordinance to a public hearing to protect the home we love. And I have copies of it if you'd like.
That's yours, ma'am. I'll be back.
Mr. Chairman, next on public comment sign up is Heidi Bear Two, followed by Kenda Honeman.
My name is Heidi Divya Bear Two, and I live in District Five. I hope you've had a good chance to read and digest the emails we sent you last week about metallic mining. I also sent an update today. Have you thought about contacting Augusta and Richmond Counties to learn from their process of creating a zoning ban on fracking? No comment on fracking, just an example. We ask you to proceed with caution, to take your time to understand what you are getting into. The popular sentiment in the county is that no one wants gold or other metallic mining. How to stop it from coming in is in search of agreement. We've been working hard for going on three years now, learning as much as we can. There's a lot to relearn. Why are we in such crisis? Our focus is to protect our own homes and our home planet. In the process, we found that the courts long ago gave rights to corporations that were only intended for humans. Those corporate rights have the objective of empowering and enriching the wealthy while disempowering our republican form of government. These rights were not also given to public corporations for our states and municipalities, you, our leaders. This is how the minority rule the majority, which is, we are told, what the revolution was about, throwing off the tyranny of the monarchy, the power of the few over the many. But today, we are ruled by obscenely and immorally wealthy corporations. This is what we are up against. To do nothing is to welcome in self-serving, polluting industry which feeds the stockholders, not our community. We have satisfied Dillon's rule, finding Virginia Code that empowers localities to protect themselves. The next obstacle is in establishing freedom from the toxic trespass of metallic mining that is daunting, is the daunting illegitimate power of the corporations to trample our health and safety because they have the right to, thanks to judges that ruled on behalf of the wealthy, not the public. We think that your process of creating zoning law would do well to be informed by the rights-based approach. It doesn't propose regulation of metallic mining in the county, rather it insists we protect the rights of the people and communities here to be free of toxic trespass. Please read the ordinance and notice the elements pushing back against corporate rights, and the brilliant "prove it first" section. Also, as my email said, please may we discuss safeguarding re-mining and reclamation of existing abandoned mines. It has to be written right, or we risk banning it or stirring up existing toxicity. I'm frustrated with this one-way direction of communications, only having public comments to give you information that we have worked hard to assemble. We asked for the Gold Mining Committee to foster discussion. That was deeply disappointing. I hope the committee meets again. Please know that Virginia Community Rights Network and Friends of Buckingham are available to share information with you if you are open to hearing other ways of looking at this. Thank you very much, and thank you for giving me another sentence.
Thank you.
Kenda Honeman and Richard Michaels.
Good evening. I'm Kenda Honeman, District Five, Steve Doyers' district. I wanted to thank Mr. Dixon for coming tonight, because we really have been wanting to talk with Kyanite. We're trying to do everything we can to avoid impacting Kyanite or the slate industry. This is about metallic mining, not about what they're doing. So Mindy and Heidi did a pretty good job of covering a lot of things I had in my notes. I will say that the Farmville Herald article quoting Thomas Ulrich was pretty eye-opening. It was Friday's edition. In case you haven't seen it, I would really encourage you to look at that.
Yeah.
Okay. Sometimes I wonder if we're being heard when we speak, because I see some distractions, and I don't know what that really is, but I appreciate your attention. So regarding the Fifth Amendment, which talks about the takings, in the move to amend, there's some very good explanation of that, and it basically says that the Fifth Amendment's many provisions include "no person shall be subject for the same offense to be twice put in jeopardy of life or limb, nor be deprived of life, liberty, and property without due process of law." And as it goes forward, it says legally mandated compensation of lost present and future corporate profits deters the passage of democratically enacted regulatory law protecting public health, safety, and welfare. So that's, it's a complicated topic, and I really hope that you will turn to people who have experience with this, such as Richmond, who passed an amendment. They had a proposed amendment that they passed to their Richmond County zoning ordinance. So they've got some experience with working with something like this. Also, Southern Environmental Law Center and Community Environmental Legal Defense Fund both works with lawyers, and this is the work they've done over years and years. So they could offer their experience, but they're not going to come to you and ask. It's up to you to reach out to them, but we have let them know that you are working on it, and they are interested in working with you. So I really recommend that you take that on. Ben Price, in the video where he presented to the Board of Supervisors, I really hope you'll hear what he had to say. And thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes.
Mr. Michaels just came forward and indicated that he had signed up incorrectly for public comment. He's actually here specifically for the public hearing regarding the rezoning case on Buffalo Road with Calvin Backrack. It's at your discretion to be able to...
That's fine. If he accidentally signed up, I'm not going to penalize him. He can speak on it.
Okay. Then I've moved him to his three-minute comment period during the public hearing for that case.
Right. We have anybody left now?
That's it for public comment.
All right, I'm going to close the public comment period, and that'll bring us to our old business. We have three applications that all have public hearing. We'll start with Olympia Moore's application.
Yes, sir. The first case before us regarding a public hearing is Case 22 ZMA 321. The landowner and applicant is Olympia Moore. The property is located currently at or near 29661 North James Madison Highway in New Canton in the Marshall Magisterial District. It is tax map 42 parcel 208, and there's approximately 13.77 acres in that parcel. It is currently zoned A1 agricultural, and the request before you, since this case came to the Planning Commission, is a request to rezone from agricultural A1 to business B1 for commercial use. Our applicant, Ms. Moore, is in the audience with us this evening to address any comments, questions, or concerns. And we do have three individuals signed up for the public hearing this evening. Mr. Chairman?
Okay. All right, thank you, Nikki. Before opening the public hearing, does any of the Commissioners have any questions for the applicant at this time?
Only question I would have is, has anything changed since your last meeting?
Okay. Thank you. All right. We'll open up the public comment, I mean, public hearing now then, for this case.
The first individual signed up for public comment is Teresa McManus, followed by Franklin James.
All I want to say is I came here to an A1 zone. I bought a farm, and I wanted to run a business. Rebecca Carter was in office, and she helped me through the process, every step of the way. I had to go back two or three times because my application was not complete. I did not have how many people, what the business was going to entail, how I was going to run it. I did not have enough information on it. I hope Ms. Moore has filled her application out. That's all we're asking. I hope and wish her well, that she has a wonderful and prosperous business in this county. But Ms. Moore has to fill out her application the same way I did, and fill in every dot, cross every T, and dot every I. I'm also here to say goodbye. You don't have to listen to me anymore. It's been fun fighting with you. It's been fun. I will tell you, I have never been so disappointed in a county as I have here, and that's why I'm leaving. I have seen corruption. I've seen malfeasance. I've seen unfairness by all of the county. I'm ashamed to say I am from Buckingham County.
Franklin James, followed by Curtis Moore.
Okay.
James, and I come to support Ms. Moore for whatever she wants to do with her land and everything, and that's it.
Would you state your address, sir?
676 Brooks Hall Road, Arbonia, Virginia.
Thank you.
Curtis Moore?
My name is Curtis Moore. I'm Olympia Moore's husband. With this property, right now, she hasn't decided exactly what we're trying to do with it. But we're in the process of working with different people to try to figure out what we're trying to do here. We want to do something like a restaurant, or grocery store, something in the community. Me and my wife have been married now 26 years. When I met my wife, we came up here, and she said this was her mom's home, which is right up the street. That was 26 years ago. Well, guess what? It's 26 years later, and it still looks the same. Ain't nothing changed down there. So the people, they want progress. Kids grow up here, there's nothing for them to do, they leave, they don't come back. There's no jobs. There's nothing for them to do here. So that's all I got to say.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
And Mr. Chairman, I did want to add, this is, no one signed up for public comment, but there were two letters of support sent in. I will not be reading them. We're not operating under COVID regulations, but they are for you to read if you choose to. They will be committed to the minutes of the meeting, but I did leave one at each station.
They're fairly short. Do you want to go and put them on public record by speaking, reading them?
If you would like...
Since they're short?
Okay, yes, sir.
And then we'll make them be part of the record. Throw them out.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The first comment comes from Pamela Logan at 4270 CG Woodson Road, New Canton, and her comment reads, Ms. Edmiston, I would like to support Mrs. Olympia Moore with her request to have her property on James Madison Highway in New Canton, Virginia, zoned from residential to commercial property. As a citizen of Buckingham County living in the New Canton area, I know that there are many businesses that we could benefit from on this end of the county. A bank, a grocery store, and a family restaurant are just a few examples. New Canton, Arbonia residents must travel to Dillon or Plavana County in order to get goods and services from any of these businesses. A full-size laundromat, and a bakery, or other establishments that would be nice to have in the area. If we could attract a big name such as 7-Eleven, or Sheets, or a drive-through car wash, that would be awesome. I fully support rezoning the property, which could result in additional revenue for the county and much-needed convenience for the New Canton, Arbonia residents. If you have any questions, please let me know. And the last letter of support is from Diane Holman James. She's out of the Whitehall Precinct, District Two. She states, "I am writing in support of Ms. Olympia Moore's request to rezone her property on Route 15 in the New Canton, Arbonia area from residential to commercial. The establishment of new businesses and economic development are essential factors to the growth of our county. However, I think the kind of business should be seriously considered in order to ensure that it best serves the immediate community as well as the county. I feel that she will make a proper assessment before moving forward. Ms. Moore has deep roots and lots of family ties in Buckingham, and will want to make them all proud of her new venture." Diane Holman James.
Okay. Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
All right, with that, I'm going to close the public comment, and we'll move it back up to public. That's all correct. That's all the speakers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll close the public hearing and turn it back over to the Commission.
Oh, I'm so sorry. One change, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. There was a lady that came to you at the beginning of the meeting...
Oh, right, okay.
And I don't have her name. I'm sorry.
Would you come forward, ma'am, and state your full name for us and address?
I'm Dolores Johnson Green. I'm Olympia Moore's mom. I brought some others with me, but they didn't know that they had to sign in. And I see some other supporters here that probably did not know they were supposed to sign in as well. Good afternoon. I fully support the request from Olympia Moore to rezone her property located on Route 15, Arbonia, from agricultural to business. Ms. Moore has said from the beginning that she wants and values input from the community as to what type of business they would like to see there. It seems to be a good idea for business growth due to the lack thereof in that particular area. I have spoken with local business owner, Mr. Jeffries, a couple of times, and he supports having a business directly across the road from his business, the Shed Service Station. I've spoken to many homeowners in the Arbonia-New Canton corridor, and they support having a new business there also. And quite frankly, it is disheartening to see the animosity and negativity associated with Ms. Moore's request. Earlier, she was even denied the right to have a public hearing. The public has the right to voice their opinion, whether yea or no. People should have the right to say what they want and where they want to live and the services that they use. And so we're here again tonight. There appears to be much more animosity and negativity directed towards her as reflected in your videos online from past meetings. There is no need for the condescending and sometimes rude comments that have been directed to her. Thankfully, it is clear that this type of behavior is not reflective of the entire Board. I grew up in Arbonia, and as any decent, law-abiding citizen, my family only wants what is good for this community. After all, we are a part of this great community and county. Remember, the greatness of a community is most accurately measured by the compassionate actions of its members. While it's not yet known what type of business will end up there, rest assured that it will be family-oriented and an asset to the Arbonia-New Canton community and Buckingham County. All we ask is a chance to prove it. And to the Board, thank you for your service to this county.
Thank you, ma'am. That's all the speakers, then, correct? All right, we'll close the public hearing, turn it back over to the Board, Commission. Any Commissioners have any questions? I only have one, the application, I think you'd indicated Nikki has been completed.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody would like to speak to the applicant, have any questions for her?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Good evening.
Again, you know, we've been here, you know, a few times, so I think everyone is really familiar with the case. Again, nothing has changed, but I have completed the application, and I have submitted it to Nikki for everyone's review. So hopefully all the Ts have been crossed and the Is have been dotted. But if you have any questions or concerns, you know, I'd like to address that at this time.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'm not sure if we have any questions. I just...
Well, I just, I just still feel like I'm excited. I've had family and friends, and actually, I picked up my wife from Arbonia. So I know I'm from Arbonia, but I think it's a good idea that you want to have some kind of business down there. The only thing is, the Planning Commission's job is to have an idea of what you want to put up before we say we approve it, or before we change it over. And that's just my idea, and to me, I would be glad to put it on hold if you found somebody and brought it back and said, hey, we want to build this right here, right now, and then we could go forward with it. To me, that's just the way I think. To me, that's just the way I think, and I just wanted to let you know exactly how I'm thinking. I think it's a good idea to build something, to have something extra in Arbonia. But until we find out what it is, to me, it's kind of, you know, no move until I find out. That's just the way I am.
Yes, I understand that. But yes, we are within the right to, you know, put a business there. There is already, you know, a business across the street, so just to change it or to have it rezoned, would is within reach of what the county is trying to do, where the land is located. And being that it's not, I mean, it is residential, but there's already businesses in that area. So it is, you know, within reach of what the county is trying to do and where the land is actually located. So, you know, as the planning commission, yes, it is, you know, within your right to say, you know, that the type of business, you know, weighs heavily. However, you know, as a member of the community, it is within our right to have it zoned from A1 to B1 because, you know, you can say that it's going to be a certain type of business, but that might not actually be what happens there. So, I don't know how much weight saying you're going to put a hair salon is going to be there, and then it changes later after it's zoned.
And you do understand that the list of buy rights in the B1 is the only thing that can come-
I have that paperwork.
You do understand that, right?
Absolutely.
Anything business that would come, if this were to go forward, would have to be, require a special use permit. But as long as, if this were to pass and go forward through the board, it would be just that business is listed on that by-
Yes, I do have that paperwork.
Just want to make sure you understood that. Any other questions for the applicants here?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
What would be the chance, as Danny suggested, to put it on hold until you could find someone? Would that be feasible for you? I know it looks bad that we don't go ahead and pass it, but it, we do need a reason or a business that you would want to put there. But could you put it on hold until you find someone?
So is that like a county or something law that it has to be, something has to be shown there? Is that like in the paperwork? Because I didn't see where it's something had to say that this is exactly what you're going to do and stick to that.
No, if your request for business one, that buy right list is what could go in it. And you're asking to change it over, so those businesses that hit those specific ones, that's the only thing that can come in there.
Right, and that's, that's exactly what would be there.
Both commissioners are just asking, and they would feel more comfortable if they knew that you had something that wanted to come in there, whatever that business was.
Yes, that's, I mean, what we're wanting to do is a family-style-owned restaurant.
But, I mean, that's, that would be your, they're requesting that. Now, that is your option to do that, suspend your application at this point.
I don't want to suspend my application.
You can go right ahead and see what happens with the, with the vote here. So, I understand your position, and if we don't have any other questions, I'm going to ask them to sit down.
I just have, I just have a comment, and it's mainly a discussion, board discussion. I am still concerned because we've changed from A1 to B1 before, since I have been on this board. And I am still at a loss why, as a board, we're having issues with Ms. Moore's application. And I, I don't understand it. She has a list of things that she can put up, and she's agreed to that list. And I, I just, I'm not following. Her application is complete. And I presented to the board before my concerns. So the application is complete, but you want to know exactly what's done. And we know we, there have been people who have had changes for zoning. And those changes, and then they changed their mind from what they told us.
Correct.
And then there have been other people who have presented to this board who have had no idea what they wanted to do. That's the best way I can put it. And we've tried to help them relocate, find a position, what about this, what about that? And we have softballed so many people, and just said, let me help you, let me help you. I just fail to understand why we are not passing Ms. Moore on to the, to the planning commission.
Oh, you mean to the boards?
For the board, I'm sorry, to the board of supervisors. Well, planning commission too, as long as we've taken with this particular case. But we, we have, we have literally held other people's hand. And I just, I don't get it. I don't see, it fits what is in that, her application fits for that corridor. It's a request. We have the list of things there. It does not say you must tell us absolutely what you're going to do.
That's right.
So, I, I just, I don't get it. I fail to understand why we have so much issue with this.
Well, it's, everybody looks at a application a little different and looks at the merit on it.
Right.
At, at this point, what I'd like to do is make sure, I want to ask them to sit down if we don't have any other questions for them, then we'll debate.
Oh, one other thing, and asking her to hold off on it until she gets something, you know, until she finds a buyer, does not make sense. We haven't asked anybody to hold off on it until they find a buyer. We've had to, unless we're finding a buyer and a commercial business for her. Because we've said, come back, we'll try this, try this, but just to say, oh, well, come back when you've really made up your mind. And for her to, I don't see that she should stand here and say, I'm going to put up a retail shop. And then you can say, okay, she's going to put up a retail shop. But you're going to complain if she doesn't put up a retail shop, if she puts up another business and say, well, she lied to us. We've had people absolutely lie to us before. Absolutely lie. I know they lying, they know they lying, and they know, we know they lying. So I, I don't get, I don't get that.
Okay.
But this is the first meeting that she's had a paperwork completed, right?
I had, I had it completed before. I did not have, I think page 11 something was missed, or missed, the VDOT. And I had to wait to actually get that back from him. But I had everything that I needed to be done. I just had to wait for VDOT to give me his portion. That's Virginia Department of Transportation.
Okay, thank you.
And I need to speak to that too, because the implication that her paperwork wasn't complete. And I rely on Ms. Edmondson to bring what she brings us to the board. She does her due diligence, and so for her to bring something to us that is, as administrator, I don't look for her to bring something that is not ready for us to discuss. And it only has to be complete, if I'm correct, by the time it goes to public hearing. And like, VDOT had to sign off by the time we got to public hearing.
That's correct.
I think that was, I think that's how it operates. So, it was complete and ready for discussion, or else Ms. Edmondson would not have brought it to us for discussion. So I, I just make that clear. Just like when we discuss items here, we discuss it, and if we send it to the board of supervisors, we have done our due diligence.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions before they ask the applicant to sit down? All right, y'all, y'all may sit down. We'll debate it now. Do we have any other, how do you want to proceed? You can table and try to get more information, but I think we've gotten plenty because we've been here for so long. And or move it forward, or turn it down. We need-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we pass this on to the board of supervisors.
Okay. Do you want to move this forward?
I do.
All right, do I have a second?
Wait a minute. She hadn't said whether she approved it or failed it. You got to say that. You got to say, yes, we will move to the board, but-
For approval.
For approval.
Approve it to the board.
That's all I need.
I move this to the board of supervisors. Thank you, wait a minute. Thank you, Danny. I move, I move that we pass Ms. Olympia Moore's case on to the board of supervisors for approval.
Okay. Now, do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, raise your right hand. All, all opposed, the same side? Or we have a deadlock tie? If I remember correctly, Mr. Wright said they have the option to move it on forward to the board of supervisors, correct? Am I remembering that correctly?
Well, the motion that was made to move it forward with a recommendation of approval, that failed with a four to four.
With a tie? Okay, so we've turned it, because it's a tie, we've turned it down. But they still have the right to go on to the board of supervisors, okay. Ms. Moore, do you understand what's your recourse, recourse of action is? All right, in other words, you can move on, request to go on to the board of supervisors. We ended up with a deadlock on the planning commission. Yes. We need to verify that with Mr. Wright. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, and those with us in the audience this evening, I did take a moment to check with our county attorney. And as of right now, with the motion failing with the four to four vote, as of now, there is no recommendation to, to give to or send to the board of supervisors at this time.
Right, I understand that. But they do have the right to go on to the board of supervisors if they choose to, correct?
We may need to bring our attorney, county attorney, out for a bit more discussion at this time. I don't have anything to send to the board of supervisors for a finding from the planning commission.
Okay, all right. Well, would you keep Mrs. Moore posted on that, please?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right, with that, we'll move to the next public hearing. It's Johnson King.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The next case before you is case 23 SUP 324. The landowner is David Stolzfus of 455 Miller Camp Road, Buckingham, and the applicant is Jonathan King at 328 Johnson Station Road. The property in question for the special use permit tonight is actually Tax Map 196, Parcel 31. It contains approximately 56.7 acres, and it's located at or near 13603 Francisco Road, Farmville 23901 in the Curdsville Magisterial District. It's currently A1, and the request is to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating a private school, one-room parochial schoolhouse. The landowner and applicant is present with us this evening, and we do not have anyone signed up for public hearing.
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant? If so, I'll bring him up forward.
Yes, I see three houses or what, three buildings already.
Would you come forward, sir?
Good evening. Jonathan King, 328 Johnson Station Road, Dilwyn.
David Stolzfus, 455 Miller Camp Road, Buckingham, Virginia.
Thank you, sir. What was your question, Danny?
My question is, I saw three buildings already over. I didn't know what, what you were doing with all three buildings.
Being a new construction, he's, he's building his residence back in there.
So putting a home and a school, and what else?
The school will be about 300 feet off the road. The residence is on, on in the back.
Oh, these were just three together. I just went down the road and see all three.
David, I'm not sure what he's building back there, exactly.
So, the one on the left-hand side of the driveway is my horse barn. The one on the right-hand side is my farm shop, hay storage, equipment storage building. And the one in the middle, all the way in the back, is going to be my new home, where me, my wife, and my children want to live here as soon as we can get the house built.
Any other questions for the applicant? Nothing, in your application, nothing's changed since you brought it forward, have you? Everything's the same, okay. Operation time, bringing students by vehicle, other than the ones that could vault?
Yes.
Okay, just, just clarification. All right, thank you, sir. You can go ahead and sit down, since we don't have any other questions for you. All right. What's the pleasure of the commission?
I'd move, we move it on to the board of supervisors.
All right, I've got a motion to approve and move to the board of supervisors. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. If that passes, you be, passes, you go on to the board of supervisors. All right, Nikki, that brings us to Calvin Bakrak.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The final case for public hearing this evening is 23 ZMA 325. Landowner and applicant is Calvin Bakrak. The property information is Tax Map 126, Parcel 11, Lot A. Contains just over two acres, and it's located at or near 5784 Buffalo Road, Dilwyn, in the Marshall Magisterial District, currently zoned A1. The request before you is a zoning map amendment, rezoning from agricultural A1 to business B1 for commercial use. We do have one individual signed up for the public hearing.
Okay, very good. Any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant before I open up the public hearing? All right, we'll open up the public hearing.
Richard Michaels.
Right.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Privileged to be here in front of the planning commission. My name is Richard Michaels. I live at 3581 Buffalo Road. My property immediately abuts, the property that's in question, for the petition for Mr. Bakrak. There's a couple of problems. I have downloaded the entire form here. There's a couple of problems as I see them. The largest one is, in his application for zoning map amendment, was he identified that the purpose is going to be for towing service. That is pretty open-ended. There's a question is, if he's going to be having tow trucks, going out and picking them up, taking them to the Buckingham County impound lot, taking them to an auto body repair, or taking them back to this location. At which time, he would probably wait for insurance companies, should there be any, to either satisfy the claim for that particular vehicle that's been damaged. If it's non-reparable, assumingly, it will be salvaged, and will have to be hauled, let's say, to Farmville for scrap. There's a question as to whether or not there's going to be significant amount of noise. There's no noise abatement that's being processed here for using a towing service. We have lived for 20, almost 22 years, it'll be 22 years in September, at this location. And we have put up with logging trucks, full and empty. We have put up with eight or nine Sealand-type containers on this property. The logging trucks were especially obnoxious. The logging trucks were especially obnoxious, as much as we had to power wash the house two times a year because of the dust on the road and the dust from the logging trucks coming down 631, now known as Buffalo Road. So, there is no identification what towing service actually means. Based upon discussion with other residents in the area, the understanding is, is that he's at what not, what used to be, the CNC Motors up off, right off 622. And while he didn't own the building, the building is going to be sold out from under him, and he needs to move all those vehicles. I stopped by there today and took a picture, there's at least 20 or 30 vehicles in that lot, which would have to make the transition right next to me, in my, in my, in my, right next to my, my house. Whether Moore will come, whether they will be scrapped, whether they, there will be a salvage yard, whether it will be sold for parts, with the comings and goings, it's, it's a little much. The end of his property line is exactly 100 feet from the end of my property line on that side. On the plat diagram, there's a plat diagram that's carried on Buckingham County books, it's completely, it's completely blank. But on the plat diagram that was furnished to the appellant, he drew the relationship of where he wanted the building and where he wanted the lot. It's not typically centered in the, in the, in the plat, that's immaterial probably. But he's got 100 feet close to my property and 200 feet away from where Buckingham Branch Railroad is.
Your time's up, sir.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
All right, thank you. So, I, I would say I discourage this application.
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Uh, let's, we may, let's close the public hearing, and then when we do discussion, if you want to. I may, I'll see, but, that's all the speakers?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm going to ask Mr. Backrath to come up and give a quick summary of the project, and maybe answer some of the questions.
Calvin Backrath, Gold Hill. First thing, and I've been meaning to reach out to Mr. Michaels, and I did not. I, I own CNC Motors building, and to the best of my knowledge, I haven't been evicted, and I'm not planning on moving those vehicles anywhere. I've owned the building 20-some years now, rented it the first, but I bought it a long time ago, so, I, I don't know where that came from. We're not moving that business to this lot, there's no intent of that.
Okay. Right. Uh, there were some questions regarding to the centering of the business, but on a lot, you got a two-acre lot. How, I, I was trying to scroll through here, I hadn't gotten to, what's your distance off of his, his property line? Calvin, do you recall off the top of your head, that the building would be?
Um, I don't have it with me, I provide it to y'all.
Right here, hold on.
Wouldn't need to be 25 feet from the side property lines.
Okay.
Joining an agricultural district.
Of course, I didn't bring that with me tonight. All right, your copy. I've got the fence lot 100 foot off of his property line.
100 foot, okay. All right, that's...
200, 210 foot off of the road.
Right.
100 foot off of his property line, and then I think his dwelling is another 100 foot or so.
Okay. All right, um, yes, Pete?
Two, two things, the last time you were here, we talked about you discussing this with your neighbor, you obviously haven't gone there to talk to him yet, is that correct?
I have not. I had the opportunity to talk to some of them. I was going down there today, and, which is the last minute, and we had some cow surgery today.
But the previous speaker is the one who has the White House up on the hill, right?
I'm aware, and I, I would like to talk to him, but...
Yeah, I, I think, and, and I'll, I'll make a comment, I mean, I suggested that, with all due sincerity, I think it's necessary, when you do that sort of thing, to talk to your neighbors, specifically if you want to change zoning. But aside from that, the reason that I, that I suggested early on, instead of going to a B1 to use an SUP, is because I thought perhaps we could put some conditions together that would satisfy your neighbors. One of those conditions was to put up a sound barrier, we suggested trees. So, I mean, we were already told that this, the sound, your, your next-door neighbor's already concerned about the sound. So, again, we've got, if, if we were to rezone this thing to a B1, then all of a sudden, we have no, there's no way for us to put conditions on this thing that would satisfy your neighbors, and that concerns me, all right? And so, I mean, I need to know, I need to know that your neighbors are satisfied that this is not going to impose on their way of life. I mean, we've seen some of this before, and honestly, it concerns me. So, I, I don't know what your plans are, now that we've had discussions. What will you do in order to help this neighbor of yours be satisfied that he's not going to be encroached by?
Well, we discussed the buffer, and I'd like to discuss it with him, like I said, I don't think a private fence would do him any good, because I think he'd be looking over top of it.
Right.
I think the vegetative barrier would be better.
But you're not forced to do it, that's something you have to...
I'm, I'm aware of that. I don't have an argument for that, except I've been doing business for 30 years in Buckingham, and I know that some of you don't know you, me, some of you do. I've always done what I've said, but again, that's, I don't expect you just to take my word blindly, I, I don't have an answer for you.
Nikki, uh, excuse me, Ms. Edmondson, what, what is the setback from, is it 50 foot, is that the required setback?
50 feet from the front and 25 on the sides and rear from an adjoining agricultural district from a, a B1.
So, if you, uh, you know, you, one of the reasons you asked for a, a B1 zoning change was so that you wouldn't have to come back to us in the event that you wanted to expand? And again, our concern, my concern was, are you going to expand toward your neighbor, are you going to expand from the front to the back? I mean, this, again, you're taking our ability away to discuss this stuff with you if we rezone, and that's a concern. That, that's a concern I have with every, everyone who comes in here and asks for a rezoning. Particularly if you have, you're in an A1 district and you do have a, a neighbor that you're, you're butting up against. So, I just don't know how to go about this and give your, you've already got a complaint here, I, I don't know how to go about this and make sure that there's not an encroachment on the part of your neighbor, having, you having not spoken to him. So, I guess my point is, maybe this thing ought to be held until, until we have some conversation between you and your neighbors, so that we know that there's some satisfaction there, I guess that's my point.
We certainly have the right to table it, if you choose to. Uh, I guess the only caveat, caveat I will say to that is, he can talk to Mr. Michaels, and they can come to agreement, but it's voluntary if we change the zoning.
Understand that.
I mean, I, you know, not to say that Calvin would go back on what he promised the man, I don't think he would.
That is a concern.
But, just so you understand that.
Well, that was one of the reasons I wondered whether or not we'd just keep it as an SUP, in an A1 district, because he could get the same thing done. The only thing is, if he, if he wants to expand, he'd have to come back and talk to us. I just didn't see the harm in that, and I didn't know whether or not you'd be willing to reconsider.
I, I'd rather just stay with what I'm doing. I, at CNC, I've done the SUPs in the past, we're still zoned A1, and I would have to do SUPs in the future, and never change that zoning up there, and it's, it's... I'd rather just stay with this request, honestly.
Any other questions for the applicant?
How big a lot is that you got? You got a lot right there showing, it's 210 feet from the highway.
The fence lot is 80-foot square, 80 by 80.
80 by 80? And that's where you're counting on putting any wrecked vehicles inside of it?
The police calls, they want it secured. It's, uh, not a lot different than what the county has right here, that's next lot over, except my building would be on the outside of the fence there.
I know the rest of the people on the road just called me and talked to me about it, has all said, they don't want to see any wrecked cars, or any like a junkyard there, so, yeah, if you keep it inside of a, is it going to be a covered fenced?
I was planning, I was planning on chain link. That doesn't matter, I mean, it's, like I say, I'm looking at what the, your impound lot here. As far as a junkyard, I spoke to some of the neighbors today, and earlier in the week, or last week, excuse me. A junkyard would need an SUP even with B1 zoning, so I have no intention of a salvage yard or a junkyard.
Yeah, I just know that everybody would like to not see the vehicles, no matter if they're junkyard or just wrecked vehicles. And I was just wondering, you had that lot, maybe the front side, you could put them, those slots in.
You can put in the chain link.
Put it in to cover it up, so you couldn't be seen. That's, that's most of the people in your area, in that area, that's what they want.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
At any one time, what would you suspect the, the amount or the number of wrecks you would have sitting in that yard? I mean, basically, the, the garage is to hold the, the roll-offs, you're not going to keep any wrecks inside the garage.
Not, not...
You're basically using that to, to house the roll-offs, correct?
House the rollback and maintenance on the roll truck, rollback trucks, so...
Okay, so then, then how many, I mean, with your experience, how, how many would we expect to see as we drove by that lot? How many, how many damaged vehicles would we expect to see?
I can't imagine them stacking up. Like I said, the insurance company's not going to let them sit there, because they don't want to pay storage.
But what happens if you don't get an insurance settlement?
You're going to, you're going to pick them up, sheriff's department, state police, and there are, there is no insurance, and they don't come after them. Those that there, I have to get paperwork from DMV to get a title before I can dispose of it. That can take up to a month. As far as the amount, I, I can't imagine 10 cars. That would be a lot, because they come and go. Like I say, the truck's coming, we talked about that, the truck is not a logging truck, it's about as loud as a diesel pickup. That being said, it does have a backup alarm, and it's going to beep when I'm backing up. That's louder than the motor of the truck, but lights are not flashing, it's a rollback, when I'm towing one, you don't have the lights on. If I have them on, I'll turn them off at night before I pull in, so they're not bothering anybody's house.
So, you're going to have, you are going to have lot lights out there, right? Security lights?
You would have, you'll have lights, lights on the, around the building, and I, I can't, it's not going to be lit up like a shopping center, no.
Any other questions for the applicant? Calvin, you can sit down, Dan, we'll turn back, we'll turn over to the board for discussion.
Mr. Chair, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm, I guess I'm just concerned, because I, I was concerned the last time about the neighbor, if you recall, in the conversation. And my suggestion to, to the, you know, the individual who's doing the proposal here, was that they sit down and talk to that neighbor, particularly that neighbor that lived next to the lot. Now, don't get me wrong, I mean, I, I saw the lot cleaned up, that lot is significantly improved since he's taken all that, that trash off that lot. I mean, I, I, I saw where the inference of those, those transport containers were, and I mean, it wasn't, I can't imagine that, you know, the neighbor would have appreciated that either, so there's been some cleanup. But still, same old story, when we change the zoning on a piece of property, we take the right of the neighbors away, we take that right away from them to have something to say about what's going to go into their, into that neighborhood. And I, you know, and you've already heard of, I think, what is a legitimate complaint, and, and it concerns me. I saw your house, I know it sits on the hill, it's a nice piece of property, and, and you're right, that, that building's going to sit 100 feet away from that fence. And we did ask if there was going to be a, a vegetative buffer, if you recall, I suggested maybe trees. But, again, the conversation didn't take place between the neighbor and the person who's proposing this thing. I just, I'm just, just really concerned about moving ahead without that conversation taking place.
Okay, if I'm reading your discussion properly, you would like to table this, to see if Calvin and Mr. Michaels can work out some details.
That's my view, I'd like to hear from the rest of the group, though.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I am not going to send this forward. And it has more to do with the equity in the treatment of the two people who have come before the board. And I've given you my opinion in our work session, but I don't think we're being equitable. I know we need to know what neighbors have to say, and we have a public hearing for that reason. And a public hearing here, and a public hearing at the Board of Supervisors, gives the neighbors two opportunities to speak. But I'm not moving this forward simply because we're not being equitable in our treatment of applicants.
Okay.
Okay? We have treated, and I've said it before, we've treated our female applicant different than we're treating our male applicant. And I can read my objections, you know, for the video, but it's already on video, what I've said about the, the equitable treatment. We need to treat people fairly. And it's not, we're reading into, is the land use appropriate? Yes. Then we should be able to pass it on to the Board of Supervisors. So, I'm not passing this on simply because we're not being equitable in our treatment of our applicants.
Okay, you, you've stated your position. How about the other commissioners? So, Pete has sort of suggested tabledness to allow time for Calvin to talk to Mr. Michaels, and see if they can come to a resolution?
Well, I mean, Calvin has a business plan for his, his land, but the other applicant didn't. They just want to do, you know, whatever's within, within B1. So, it's not the same, you're right. It's not someone being treated differently as a man or woman or whatever. He has a plan, the other applicant doesn't.
Well, he has a plan, but it's like we stated in the January meeting, once you change the zoning, doesn't mean he has to put tow trucks there. I mean, so that plan means nothing, it just means that, that's what he hopes to get there, what he's planning on. That's the thing that Pete's brought up, is you can't put conditions on it, on a text zoning amendment. And that's, that's because you, what you're saying is, you're allowing whatever's in the list on buy right and business to come in there.
Right, but at the last minute, he spoke about putting the trees there, and...
Again, it's just like we said, because he, Mr. Backrath says he's going to put a towing thing here, we could move it on to the Board of Supervisors, and he doesn't have to do that. Once it's passed, he could change it, as long as it's, whatever's allowed in the B1. So, you've got an argument, and we've been through this several times, there is an argument there, but it's not, it's not a lot of difference between the two applications.
With, with what Pete is suggesting, I think that is a nicety, but it is not a requirement. So, I don't think that is a reason to table. Nikki has given us data in the past, I think she said 95% of our county is currently zoned A1, does that sound about right?
I'd say that's...
My rationale, while I respect Joyce's position, my rationale is to move it forward with the same reason that I voted for Ms. Moore. And that is because if we are going to continue to try to micromanage every business that comes in here and not rezone to B1, on the heels of our Economic Development Committee meeting that we had the other day, there will be no progress if we are not willing to rezone some of the property, especially in cases that the land use makes sense. Then we're not making any progress as a county.
Right, but if someone comes in with a business plan, they're going to buy that property and do that, right? They're not going to be like, oh, let's see what we can do.
Not necessarily, but I'm not going to make this about the previous applicant right by now.
I'm just saying that in general, not, not previous applicant, just in the future, in general, like today or tomorrow.
Planning Commission, our job is to look at the land use and assess that, not the business plan itself. So, if the area is right for a business, if the landowners, as weighing, you know, the proponents for it and the opponents against it, if the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors see fit that it is a place for proposed development, I think the business itself is irregardless.
Okay, good discussion.
And just go back to, to finish up what we're working on right here now. If you would like to look at what, what we're looking at to see what he's going to build, can you take yours over and show him? The one with the lot on it, that's showing where he would build a building and a lot? Have you seen that? Oh, okay.
Which one, uh, is it, was his drawing?
With the drawing of the lot and the building.
Lot in the building.
Okay, I didn't know if you'd seen it. I didn't know if you approved that or you didn't approve that. You like it or you don't like it? Okay.
Look at the plaque. You have length and width. The way these things are designed by surveyors. Look at the numbers that he has. Lot is two hundred and ten feet from the road. There is only one road. Ingress and egress is the same road, nothing in the back.
Yes, sir.
That's probably fine. Look at the width. Hundred feet, this lot is a hundred feet from my property lot. But the width is two, two hundred and ten feet, I believe, in the other direction. I'm not saying you should put it smack dab in the middle. That's not really my requirement, what I would ask for, but it's getting close. So in my comments, I talked about noise abatement. What happens, for example, if it becomes a thriving business and he wants to buy a car crash? You know, it's his own salvage. It's easier to take wreck vehicles like stacking three O and on there.
Yeah.
To the salvage yard. Say, operating a towing service, I don't know what that really means. One tow truck, two trucks, tow trucks, tow trucks are being taken, dropping things off with formerly Gillian Mullers. You know, where are these things going? Apparently, they probably could. Time to have a two feet rise over his property.
Right, understand, understand. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know if you'd seen that and I knew that they wanted to have more discussion and.
There is a comment in here, by the way, by the fence. But on the plaque that has, does not have his. That also says iron fence, sign on the left. Somebody apparently once upon a time planned to put a fence around this lot. There's been no fence ever around this lot. As far as, as long as we've, we've been here. Haven't heard the story about the trees, but it's gonna take. You to tour and walk through you from our house. So, I mean. Closest Buffalo Road resident to. I'm not anti-capitalist, I'm not anti-commercial. Plenty of other areas that do not infringe. We're the first house on six thirty-one that people would pass.
I know, we gotta get down. Okay.
But you would pass the, the salvage yard first.
All right, thank you for your comments. Let's move it back to the commission because we're. Any further discussion before I make a motion? You got three options, table, approve, or disapprove? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we table this until we have both participants equal with what they wanna have, what they wanna do, if they could work it out. If not, then we'll have to do something different. But I just think that you need to resolve that like Pete was talking about first. So I, I think we should table it.
But would that be binding, whatever? I mean, the Planning Commission really isn't involved in the verbal agreements that landowners have?
That's correct. What they're, he's, by table-ling, they're just giving them opportunity to talk and then come back to us for the decision. But it's voluntary. We have no authority to make that happen. But that is a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor that wanna table it, raise your right hand. Three, okay. All opposed to that motion, same sign? Three, George, you're abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. And we gotta tie again.
Sir, may I make one, one final comment?
Not at this time, sir, please. Not, not right at this moment, please. I gotta work this out here. So we may have to have Mr. Wright. We gotta tie again because we have one abstain.
It was four to.
One, two, three.
Four to four, three.
What, we have four to three?
Four to, yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry, I miscounted, apologize. All right, that motion failed. So now we're left to two options, either approve it or disapprove it. So do I have a motion, either one?
My motion would be to approve it and move it along to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, we have a motion approved. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, right, raise your right hand to approve it and move it forward to the Board of Supervisors. One, two, three, four, five. All right, that, that will move on forward to the Board of Supervisors. All right, thank you. That brings our new business.
Mr. Chairman, as we discussed last week at the work session, the gold mining committee was, held a, a meeting on the day of the Board of Supervisors meeting just prior to that. And there was a finding from our gold mining committee. And as a finding of the gold mining committee, there was a recommendation back to the board regarding removing metal mining from the zoning ordinance or to task the Planning Commission with the consideration of an amendment to the zoning ordinance to remove metal mining as an activity allowed in any district. Obviously, as many comments were heard here tonight, and I know there's been lots of discussion on the board, there was discussion last week at the work session, unintended consequences and ensuring that the Planning Commission carries forth their due diligence. That's the only item that we have under new business.
Okay, I do understand that we have Board of Supervisors, Jordan Miles is gonna come up and sort of give us a summary of what the board is expecting from us.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission Supervisor Allen, thank you all for having me. It was my understanding that you wouldn't be to, to come and sort of elaborate a little bit on, on the board's action and in my role as sir. Yes, sir.
I'm having a hard time. Can we shut that door back there? I'm sorry. I beg your pardon.
Go ahead, Jordan.
Mr. Chairman, I did wanna also acknowledge the presence of our board chairman, chairman chambers as well. So going back to what Ms. Edmondson was saying, Mr. Chairman, the committee that was comprised of myself as chairman of the committee supervisor Bryant from District Five, one member of the northwestern portion of the county representing interests there too, and several other staff members made up of that, made up that committee. And before our meeting on February the thirteenth, we did have a committee meeting. And that committee was established, Mr. Chairman, to respond to this report. And the report, it's a, it was a state study and a report from the National Academy of Sciences that resulted in this report as a result of House Bill twenty-two thirteen that came before the General Assembly in twenty twenty. This report did find that the Commonwealth of Virginia doesn't have the regulatory framework to support an industrial scale gold mine in, in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So therefore, the Board of Supervisors put together this committee for a recommendation to the full board. So I offered the motion, the board voted on it on a vote of six to one, as Supervisor Allen knows well. That was the board vote to make the following recommendation to the Board of Supervisors and hence you all as our Planning Commission, to amend the zoning ordinance, to remove metal mining as an activity allowed in any zone district. And item B would be that the zoning ordinance be amended to define what metals will be prohibited or allowed, but you know, however you all wanna do that. And to note to what Ms. Honeman said, that, you know, that I agree that obviously, and in tune with what Mr. Dixon said, there, in no way does anyone in the county, you know, want to see our current industries impacted. That would be the, the aggregate operation with the Slate Quarry and also what Conite has contributed as a good corporate partner over the last many, many years. And that can be done in terms of the details you all put forth. So that's kind of where the board is again. And just to, just to be clear, there was one opposing vote to, to that recommendation as there was, the vote was five to one at the committee level to offer this recommendation. And of course, you know, there's been a lot of discussion, some good discussion with regards to the, I'm sorry, not evidence-based. I say that at work all the time. The rights-based ordinance, prove it first. The board did see fit to, to add, to, to go through the zoning ordinance with regards to an, an amendment to the zoning ordinance. That's, that's really where we are. I'd be happy if, 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 if you, Mr. Chairman, have any, any questions. I might have to call on Mr. Wright if, if, if you get, I'm not a lawyer and I will not pretend to be one. I don't get paid like they do.
I think the high point of it was you want no metallic mining in any district, correct?
That's what the board voted on.
Okay.
Yes, that, that, that was the board's vote.
Just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly.
Yeah, we, and, and I think, you know, we're gonna, the board is gonna be relying heavily on the Planning Commission to, to, you know, dig in and to, and I think it's a great idea to include some of our current and industries and even the aggregate folks. And I know you and I both have had calls from the Virginia Transportation Construction Alliance, which is in the aggregate business.
Right.
And I think you all bringing them to the table and then also Conite would be very prudent in, in how you all judiciously go about threading the needle.
Okay, thank you, Jordan. Does any commissioners have any questions for Mr. Jordan?
I just got a statement that, that I like about this thing. If it's got something to do with chemicals, and I think that's something we need to get rid of. But the word mining, where my whole family, when I was younger, worked at Solite, Slate Quarry and somebody else at Conite. So these are minings in this county, this run this county for years.
Right.
So to put the word mining in there would be against any of these, in my opinion.
Mm-hmm.
So what we ought to do is have something that says we're gonna do something about the chemicals so that people will not bring any chemicals into this county and make it, make your water go bad, the land go bad or whatever. You know, whatever they use to, some of them to wash the, the gold out. I know it's another chemical they use for that. But if we can put that in, to me, that would be a better deal. You know, we can cut them off, but not worry about the people or the minings that we already have in the county. That's my opinion.
Well, that, that sort of dovetails with the call Jordan got, as well as Nikki, myself, and Rob Landham. And I've sat with Nikki's assistance, but mainly her help, and she did most of it. And now we have a work session set up for March twentieth. We had planned to introduce the comprehensive plan, but they're gonna bring, Rob is gonna assemble a group to come and speak to us. And there'll be mining companies, I've already expressed to Guy and John, Conite to come also. I think he's also probably gonna try to have some engineers from Virginia Tech. It'll probably be somewhat similar to the group that we had for the core sampling when they came and talked to us about that. Now, Rob is supposed to have sent an email, I'm gonna have to contact him because he, he'd asked to anybody that had questions, Planning Commission as well as Board of Supervisors, to send them ahead of time and they could already get the answers and prepare for that information. And what you're indicating, Danny, is exactly what one of my concerns was. Look, we don't want to, right now, I don't know the process for all of these metals for extractions and processing and what's involved in it chemical-wise or not. So I think the more information we can get about the mining industry from them and what actually is involved and what are the hazards of, of this metallic mining and how to separate Conite situation as well as the aggregate business of the Slate Quarry. So that's set up for the twentieth. Nikki got that arranged. And I'll, I guess I'll get him to email you. I'll make a call tomorrow and ask him to email. But anyhow, that's where we stand on that. I think that'll lead us to a lot of information. I also talked to Mr. Wright in regards to our timeframe. And he said we really basically had a hundred and twenty days before we needed to get something to the Board of Supervisors. Now, I don't know that it will take that long, but I would rather take time and make sure we've got all the information we'd need to make a proper, craft a proper ordinance where we're not having damage done to the existing mines already in the county. Also keeping our exposure for legality for the county at a minimum, but also accomplishing what the Board of Supervisors has charged us with. Now, one of the other things concerned is what Pete had brought up too with the reclamation of the existing mines. We have to be really careful if we want that process to go on, which is very important, I think, because it's just like Pete indicated. It takes, you know, you're getting some of that stuff out of the ground now that might be leaching and we can get that, you know, under control, but we have to be careful that they don't get swept up in the ordinance that we craft. So I think the more information we get, the better process we can have and hopefully a very good crafted ordinance that will satisfy all three conditions.
And too, Mr. Chairman, if you want, if you have any trouble sleeping, this, this document has, has, this study has a lot of good information in it, in all seriousness. So I would, you know, there were a lot of hands that, that made that, that study work, so, or come to life. So I would, I would highly encourage you all to, to take a look at that, at least the first part.
Right, Jordan, I would also extend the invitation to any of the committee members that would like to be here for that work session.
Okay.
You know, to participate as well or take notes, whatever. And it very well may be important that we have a meeting with the committee at some point to end the crafting process.
Sure, I think, I, I, I think they'd be open to that.
Okay, very good.
I, I don't see an issue with that.
All right, thank you.
Speaking on behalf of myself.
Right, okay, very good. That's all where we stand. Does anybody have any?
Just a question. If we invite these people, and I'm really encouraging that we do, I encourage that we are inviting them, it's gonna be discourse right between us and them. I'd like to be able to ask questions.
Or to the people?
Absolutely. I know it's a work session, but I'd like to make sure that.
Yes, the way it's gonna be set up is that they're gonna present and any questions that can be submitted earlier, they'll answer those, you know, they'll have a prayer. But yes, it will be interaction. Once they, if it was like the core sampling, we had, they had a speaker that might, would speak and then you could have the ability to ask them some questions. Then another speaker, you know, would talk, catch another. So it will be a lot of interaction.
You know, my position is, I told you before, I think this is an unbelievably complex situation. We've got laws bumping up to each other, we've got mining in the, in the community. There's a definition that, you know, when it comes down to the kind of mining. I mean, is it called a mineral? Is gold called a mineral? Because it could be. My point is that it seems to me that, you know, whatever we end up with here, we're looking to provide an ordinance that, that keeps our, our community safe and maintains land value out here, but at the same time, you, you certainly don't wanna interrupt these businesses, as you mentioned, that we already have here.
Right.
But I also wonder whether or not we ought to be seeking some advice from people who have been involved in ordinance writing in the mining, in the mining community, particularly as it relates to other municipalities or counties that have had issues with this. And I, and we were given an offer here, there's the S E L C and the, and the CalDEF, which I think have lawyers on staff that are willing to talk to us. And I wouldn't, I would not. And I wouldn't, I would not completely ignore those people. Uh, I'm not talking about just Mr. Price who does presentations, I'm talking about people who've actually had the, the task of writing those ordinances to make sure that they keep us out of the courts. Is there some way we can, I don't know if it's gonna, we can do this in one work session, but in some of those work sessions, I think it's important for us to get the appropriate advice. And no, no disrespect meant to Mr. Wright or anything, you know?
Right. Well, I think it's probably realistic, it's not gonna be resolved in one work session. We're probably gonna have at least two, it might even possible to have three. And, uh, you know, the main thing is to get it correct. And what we can do is look at these outside sources and see if it's, uh, if we can get them to come, or at least present a summary or something, uh, so we can look at, yeah. Uh, any other questions for Jordan or comments on this?
And too, Mr. Chairman, just, just to be crystal clear, that, um, the, the Board of Supervisors, again, on that affirmative vote, did, would like to use the, um, land use-based, uh, of, of regulatory framework as outlined in the Code of Virginia, using the zoning ordinance and putting up whatever, and, uh, putting up these appropriate guardrails.
Okay.
I don't know, the guardrails.
Well, for, for, for how we go about threading this needle is what I'm saying.
I think basically you're right, I don't know that we, I think the other law is basically civil rights, correct? I mean, we're not-
I can't speak to that, I don't know.
That's, that's not within our purview. I mean, if you talk about toxic trespass, that's not in our purview, if I'm not mistaken.
I, I can't answer that, 'cause I'm not, I would defer that to your chairman or Mr. Wright.
Right. I think we're trying to stay within the legal frame that we've been given, which we're working on now.
What was in our purview, but I think we can do some things, it's just that I don't wanna do things that are gonna be, uh, that, that are gonna end up, you know, we will not have the, the ability to enforce for one reason or another. Like I said, these laws have a tendency to bump up against each other, even including the U.S. Constitution, so we need to be very careful.
Right. All right. Thank you, Jordan, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll extend, I'll extend a, uh, offer to the Board of Supervisors also for that work session.
What was that?
You're more than welcome, I hope you can attend both the work session.
Oh, sure. Yes, sir. Thank you, members, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no more comments on this, uh, we'll close out. And Nikki, that brings you to your billing permits and report.
This evening, I do not have anything to add under zoning administrator.
Okay, very good. That brings us to commission matters and concern. Any commissioners have any concerns that they wanna express at this time? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in two seconds. All in favor, raise your right hand.